Motion to open, Mr. Chairman.
Opened.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
All right. Do we have any board or committee reports tonight? It's usually you.
Yeah.
All right. We have no citizens' concerns published. Is there anyone? I know we have some hearings coming up, and that doesn't come under citizens' concerns. Okay, separate issue. At seven o'clock, Dog Hearing, Doreen Rose, 223 Middle Road, Dog Izzy. Doreen?
That's me.
That's you, okay. I guess what you do is get up and, you're the one that sent us a letter, correct?
Yes, I did.
Yeah.
Did you receive it today?
Yeah, we got it today. Do you want to read the letter? It came from you, so you can read it, or I can stumble through and try and read it.
The officer we just talked to was gonna try to have a conversation with everybody. Are we not doing what?
Okay, let's wait, let's wait for him then. I didn't know what was going on.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. All right, in that case, in that case, let's give him a few minutes.
Okay.
And we have a couple other things we need to do.
All right.
We have two things that we have to act on as a board, and one, I'll read it. A vacancy on the town's Board of Registraz has occurred as a result of the death of longtime board member Ed Coppender. To comply with Mass General Law, Chapter 51, RF 15, the board requests the Democratic Town Committee submit a list of three enrolled members to be considered for the appointment as registrar within 45 days. It's important for the town's compliance with the law that three names must be submitted for consideration. Additional compliance requirements are as follows. Mass General Law, paragraph 12, which states that party enrollment status must have been maintained continuously for two years, and Mass General Law, Chapter 51, Section 25, states that registraz must hold no other office either by election or appointment. Pursuant to Section 5 of Chapter 55 of the general laws, registraz cannot serve as the chairman, treasurer, or other principal officer of any political committee. Okay, and what this is, is a letter from the selectmen to the Democratic Town Committee requesting that they send us letters. They sent us a letter with some recommendations for who they want.
Okay. Very good.
All right.
So...
Motion to send the letter.
Motion to send the letter.
Second. Any other questions? No? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, done, okay.
All right.
So, have you got, Martha's got the original, let's get that signed.
Do you want to go through some of the new business before the hearing or going?
Yeah, we've got another thing I've got to do first. It's even more important.
Do you have to take minutes?
That's it, we're short on pens tonight, guys. All right, we have, this is a letter from town clerk, and it's to the office of the board of selectmen. At a meeting of the board of selectmen, you were appointed, we're jumping the gun, she hasn't been appointed yet.
This is for you to vote to.
Yeah, this is to vote to appoint her, yeah, okay. Leslie has requested that we appoint Terry Literst to the, um...
As an election worker.
As an election worker.
Yeah.
And last time we did this, we kind of dropped the ball because we said we'd think about it and act on it, and by the time we did that...
The election.
It was after the election, okay. So, we have an election coming up, it's imperative that we do it tonight, all right?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Second, okay. Any questions or anything? Okay, this is under Leslie's recommendation, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done, good.
Just classification, that's different from what you're talking about before.
Yeah, here, matter of fact, here.
I have.
You got them, okay, yeah, they are different. The other one is, we're requesting the Democratic Committee to send three names, you know, who they want on the committee, that's all. All right. All right. Town Administrator is over at the Finance Committee meeting, she'll be back. New business, one-day liquor license, Samuel Johnson, not sure, NS bartending for a wedding, June 14th, and that will be...
Spencer Pierce.
Spencer Pierce.
Spencer Pierce. I say Kathy, but Martha, is all the paperwork in on this?
Yeah, check here when everything is in.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, second.
All right, any questions on it? No? All right. We have new business, Gary, I'm horrible, mirator, Gary, yeah, was I close?
You were perfect.
All right. Doing business is Plum Crazy at 134 Northern Boulevard. Could you come out and tell us what you, yeah, and we need to do the microphone so that people over in Byfield can hear. Right? Without the microphone, they won't hear it. Hi, how do you do? I'm Joe Story, Chairman Chuck Beer, and Jeff Walker, and previously, okay, previously, I used to go down there for breakfast all the time, so...
Well, I hope you come back.
Yeah.
We basically want to run it the same way it was run. It was a great concept. We own two other restaurants, another package store, so everything just kind of seemed right. We have a house two blocks from Plum Crazy, and for the last few years, been driving by it during the summer, going, oh geez, you know? And we want to retire here someday, so we thought, what a great way to do it.
And now, what are you going to be, is it food, are you going to go for the liquor, or what are you going to do?
We are going to apply for the beer and wine license.
Okay, so that'll be later time, later date?
Yeah, we kind of want to get it open. We've been in there, cleaning it up, painting, trying to renovate it, and, yeah, we want to have breakfast, lunch, we will be open for dinner, a little convenience store, and a beer and wine license.
Sounds familiar, just like it was, right?
Just like it was.
Our intention is to bring it back to life.
Yeah, okay.
As opposed to go in and change it and making something different.
Yeah, we didn't want to change the name, we just thought it, we were crazy about the island, basically.
Yeah.
First time we saw it, bought a house, and it just kind of fit for us, and we said...
Okay. And I'm not even sure of Board of Health regulations, but you'll have like an inspection before you open up with them and sign off.
Yes, I've already spoken with the Board of Health, got their paperwork, I've just got to put in the application, they said give them, you know, a few days, whatever they come out with.
So they can get down, yeah, okay.
That's what we've been working on, actually, the last couple weeks, just trying to get it ready for them.
How close are you to ready, just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, very close.
Yeah, good.
Very close.
It was in pretty good shape, and it was all pretty new and modern, you know?
Yeah, it was, the equipment he bought was fantastic, it's really just going in, cleaning it up, getting ready to go.
Any motion?
Motion to approve the new business license.
Yep, motion to, also for me to approve, I mean, if there's...
No, second.
A second, yeah. You know, depending on what health and all the other things that you've got to go through, it's fine with me.
Any other questions?
None.
All right, any, I just got any questions on a new business in town? No? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Best of luck.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay, one-day liquor license for Lisa Lanigan, bartending in service of New England for a function at Pitta Hall on May 18th. Everything's in audit, okay?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? No? What were the hours on it?
Two to seven.
Two to seven.
Two to seven, that's good.
Perfect hours.
Perfect, yeah. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, the next item on here was from Michelle Walsh, and she was going to discuss some ongoing beaver issues she's got over at her house, and I talked to her this morning, and she doesn't feel she needs to come because she's gone through the, I say mess, but she's gone through the cycle, and it is a cycle, it's several issues you have to go through, and when you get a permit to remove beavers in a beaver dam, the first thing you have to do is, you've got, you've got a 10-day window to trap the beavers, and then you've got a so-many-day window after that with no period in between to take down the dam, and it's state DEP regulations, and it starts at the Board of Health, and it can start at Board of Health or Safety. In her case, the way the water was backing up, it could have affected her septic system or her well, and so that's it. And one of the reasons she was frustrated was she had contacted a trapper, and then he kind of disappeared, and now the clock's ticking on her permit, so we found another trapper for her, and so it's supposed to be taken care of today, so, anyway, it's all fine and good until the water starts backing up in Yo-Yad, you know, and that's the problem. Okay. All right, we, preliminary discussion on here, and it's the EEA's Dam and Seawall Repair and Removal Grant Funding Program. David had done the homework on that, and he's going to be here late, and I would like to put that off until he shows up.
Makes sense to me.
And there's really, you know, he's got the information he wants to bring to us. All right. We've got the Chapter 90 reimbursement request for the Byfield Village safety improvements, these are traffic improvements. Okay, you're pretty, pretty much familiar with it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, these are invoices that have come through that I've reviewed and approved and go through, through Kathy and through Angela.
None of those for the 15 grand? Or those for the 67, I mean?
Well, it's actually, it's a total of 80-plus. This particular one is $15,410.
Yeah, that's the one, yeah. Okay, I see they're right, yeah.
Okay, motion?
To approve.
Second.
Second. Do you have any other questions, comments, discussion? And I don't see...
Can we get more?
What? Yeah, can we get more? Chuck wants to build more roads.
I do.
Yeah, all right. Anyway, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. So, we'll get those signed.
Okay, that's, we sign them tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Who, everyone, everyone to Chuck? I'm trying to kill time.
Oh. We'll do the minutes. Take a look, read the minutes, Joe.
No.
That'll do it.
You can read them. All right, now, Kathy's, I believe these are the meetings that Kathy sent us, and it's for the April 22nd meeting. And, let's see, Story Beer, Garry's, we're here, okay, so we can all vote on it.
I didn't see any errors or omissions, so motion to approve.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, done, okay, that's done. Communications. I got the other day a finalized budget from the Whittier School. If anyone wants to see it, call me, and I'll get it to you. What have you been to, anything? Of course you have.
Nothing comes to mind.
Okay.
So, we're trying to, you know, kill a little time? Want me to tell the...
We're going to tell the people about green crabs?
No, that's a good thing, yeah, very good. Actually, we've received a grant, Peter Fippen and myself and Alyssa Novak, Mass Base Program, and we've been working on the reintroduction of eelgrass. What we've found in our endeavors is that the re-institution of eelgrass is going to be hamstrung immensely by green crab. Green crabs came from Northern Europe. There was a strain from the northern part of Europe that is terrifically aggressive, and that's up in Maine and Nova Scotia. There was a Southern European introduction that came through New Jersey, they've been here for 100 years, that green crab is a little less aggressive, but we're inundated with green crab. Today, we were down on a marsh in Exeter, and we could see where the marsh was actually honeycombed with the green crabs going in to burrow to probably escape some of the winter cold waters, so green crab could be a tremendous problem, DMF is aware of it, Bruce Tarr's been working diligently to try to formulate a control plan and some science, it's growing into quite an issue. Green crabs will basically eat anything in your estuary, and when we put a trap over, let's say we're getting 500 to 800 in a trap during the summer, and sometimes, like even now, we're getting a couple hundred, so the clambers have all noticed the problems, they're inhibiting the spat and the growth of clams. I can remember, I used to have a cottage on Sandy Point, and out in front of Sandy Point, it was all blue mussels. Green crabs go after blue mussels first, there isn't a blue mussel that I know of in the Parker River. So, it's a problem that right now has, if you read Yankee Magazine or go on the internet, it's decimated Maine shellfish, soft shellfish industry, and Canada is just starting to come back. Cold winters seem to inhibit them, cold winters don't inhibit the northern crab as much as it does our crab, and the northern crab is coming this way, so we're trying to produce science that will give us answers, we're trying through Bruce Tarr and other people to produce a control program. If the crab was bigger, it's usually three inches and smaller, it would have a strong commercial component as a food item, but because of its size, it really doesn't, so this is the new invasive that Europe's given us, Asia seems to give us a lot of them, we've got fragmites, we've got all kinds of, you know, Asian shark, shark, I mean, there's just everything. It seems to come from the boats, it seems to come from the garden centers, so the great marsh seems to be a real incubator for all these problems, so, but anyway, that's the newest update that I can give you, and I'll continue to bring in little tidbits as we find out more.
Thank you.
While we're on nature, last week I was over at Manta Field, and I noticed a killdeer. Does anyone here know what a killdeer is? Okay. A killdeer is a plover-like bird, and they're a ground bird, pretty much, they don't fly an awful lot, and when they lay a nest, their mechanism for protecting the nest is if they see any danger, they lure the danger away, okay? They run, they get your attention, they run a few feet, and then they act like they're hurt, they pick their wing up and sort of crawl along, and they gradually pull you away from the nest and then fly away. But anyway, after seeing it there, and it's an area where several hundred kids play sports every night, I call the Highway Department, they put a fence around it, and then our resident town biologist, Dave Taylor, went over, and he said the fence is wrong because they like to walk, they won't fly over the fence, and he lifted up the fence so they can come and go to the nest, and it's all labeled over there, and if you go over there and walk, it's like, where's Waldo? Find it, okay, because they blend in so well, but it's a success story for four eggs so far. All right, Chief, you've got...
Unfortunately, we weren't able to come to a mediation on either case, so we go forward with the hearing.
Okay, good enough. All right. Do you want to read your statement?
I don't know, should I start if the complaint took out first?
We've done it all different ways.
We're responding to the...
Yeah, responding, okay, so why don't we get the, yeah. I'm picking on you because your page was on top.
Okay.
Now, you, you guys are Izzy?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so... Still here.
Hi, how are you?
Who filed the complaint? All right, could you just give a description of what your complaint is?
Sure.
Do you mind going up to the microphone?
Can you please give your name and address?
My name's Lori Martin, and I live at 186 Middle Road in Byfield. The first time that the Izzy attacked our dog Miles was back in the summer, and I was walking with my friend Michelle Howard, and what happened was, and Michelle has written a letter, I don't know if you need that, but I didn't submit it before, but Michelle has written a letter to give a statement as to what she saw. I can read that or just describe it, but we were walking with my dog Miles, and Miles is an 11-and-a-half-year-old Wheaton Terrier, and has never had any other incidences with other dogs or people, and he was on leash, under control, and when we came down to the house in front of 223 Middle, I don't even know, I mean, Michelle described it better than me because I was just so shocked, the dog came running down the driveway, and before we could do anything, Miles was pinned, and I was trying to, I don't even know if I tried to kick it, or I tried to, I don't know, but I know that Helen Latham, who's here tonight, who lives at Austin Lane, was walking with her daughter, and we didn't know each other beforehand, but she was walking in the other direction, thank God, and had the wherewithal to grab Izzy by the tail and pull her off of Miles. I didn't realize how hurt he was, I mean, I saw some blood, but, you know, puncture wounds don't really bleed excessively, so, but Michelle was like, you got to get him to the vet, so we brought him up to Newbury Animal Hospital, and the first time, he had over eight or nine puncture wounds. He had puncture wounds on his neck, four of them, he had four or five puncture wounds on his paw, and required, as you guys know, because they were gracious enough to pay for the vet bill the first time, you know, antibiotics and treatment and all that, and the understanding was that after that first incident, that Izzy was going to be under control and on leash. So, really, I want to say, I jog, so sometimes I've jogged by Izzy, and he, she does bark, but she's been on her rope, and we, I go on my merry way, but I really haven't walked Miles down there more than once or twice since last summer, just because it's, it was very traumatic to deal with that. But my husband, last month, we were, it was a Sunday, or was it a Sunday, honey? I don't even remember, it was a Sunday, and we had our son's other two dogs, so we had four dogs on leash, and he said, let's go down to the governor's, I'm like, I said, I don't want to do it, and he goes, no, it'll be fine. So, back we go with the four dogs, and again, before I know it, Izzy is down the driveway. It looked to me like either she was trailing a leash, or maybe she broke her rope, I'm not sure, I think she had some sort of a leash on, and again, got Miles, it's funny because we had four dogs, but she must not like Miles because she went right to Miles again, and this time, my husband, I don't know how he did it, but he was able to grab Izzy off, but in the meantime, she still punctured, I mean, Miles still had three or four puncture wounds on his side, and I have letters, I mean, I don't, maybe it's a moot point, Helen can speak for herself as to what she has experienced separate from us, because she walks by that house as well. We also have another dog, Finn, that we've rescued, so it's not that, we love dogs, and we love rescue dogs, all we're asking, I guess, and why we didn't want to mediate, is we certainly don't want the dog put down, that's, that's not fair, and it's not the dog's fault, we just would like the dog in a fenced-in area, in a restrained area. I don't feel like just having the dog under the owner's control is enough, because it happened twice, and Izzy's a strong dog, and even if he was holding Izzy on the leash, and I walked by with Miles, and Izzy just had a burst of energy, she could probably, you know, break free, so does that pretty much state what we're asking? And I don't know if, if it would help if Helen could get up and also...
You had, you had another comment from, who was with you?
I have Helen here, but she wrote a letter, but she can speak.
Oh, it's the same one.
And I have one from Michelle Howard as well.
Right, she's not here, so could you read that?
Yes, sure. She wrote, "To whom it may concern, I've been asked to write this letter in reference to a walk that I took with Lori Martin and her dog Miles on Middle Road in Newbury. When we took the left at the split between Orchard Street and Middle Road, a dog came charging out of the driveway on the left hand of the street. It latched onto Miles and would not stop attacking him. The owner of the dog made no attempt to call the dog off verbally, nor did he try to intervene physically. A woman," that's Helen, "who was also walking, came from across the street, pulled on the dog's tail, which gave Lori time to pull Miles away. The woman who helped us out told us that this dog has charged her in the past. As we walked Miles back home, I noticed he was bleeding. Lori was visibly shaken from the incident, and I have not walked back past that house ever since. Sincerely, Michelle Howard."
Okay.
Did you want Helen to come?
Yeah, we'll get that side of it done.
Okay, thanks.
Introduce yourself.
My name's Helen Latham, I live at 3 Austin Lane, Byfield.
Okay.
Pretty much what she said, we were walking, and usually the dog is on the lead, and just for some reason that day, it just came down the driveway, which caught us all by surprise, and they just latched on to her dog, and we were pulling it, and eventually the owner came, and he was kicking the dog to get it off, and somehow the dogs did get separated, and he just went back up the driveway, and we started walking, and I noticed that her dog was limping, and I saw blood, so I told her she definitely needs to bring the dog to the vets, and she probably should report the incident, and I did write a letter to the animal control officer via Newbury Port Police. The only thing I could say is, very nice people, but when I walked by there, and every time that dog's out, he just charges at you until he's at the, with the end of a collar, like, I'm afraid if that collar's ever broken, what's going to happen to myself or anyone else who is walking, and that, I'm not even with a dog at that, I own a dog, I don't bring my dog down there, just because he doesn't walk that far, but I don't, I don't even have a dog, and he charges like that, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Hi, I'm Doreen Rose, I live at 223 Middle Road, and I am the owner of Izzy, along with Mark Gelneck, and I'm really, truly, truly sorry for what Izzy has done to Miles and how people might feel about Izzy. We did rescue her, and have had her now since 2010, and the only aggression that we've ever known her to, to experience, other than, you know, barking on her lead that we now have on her, or we used to have on her, was what she did with Miles, and we are really, truly sorry for that. We are responsible dog owners. The first incident happened about two weeks into us training her on an electric fence, and she had her leash on her, and she had been making significant progress, we thought, so that she could be on leash within the confined area when we were out there, and that's what happened. For some reason, we don't know what it is, and we can't speculate why it is that, that Miles caused her, causes her this anxiety, but that's what happened in that incident. We put away the electric fence, we stopped using it immediately, and we only tied her. And unfortunately, that morning, when she went out, her rope did break, and that was an unfortunate accident, and Mark went running down, I was not there for either incident at the time, Mark went running down to, to get Izzy, and immediately brought her back into, into the house. And immediately, we no longer, actually, we talked at length with Carol, she's here, and we no longer, we don't have a door to our backyard, otherwise we would always have her out, we would have always had her out there. Now, we only, we leash her in the house, we walk her around to the backside of the house, and that's how we've been handling things until, well, we currently do, but we also hired an experienced licensed dog trainer, Melissa McQ McCraft, who is a behaviorist with animals, and she labeled these incidences and how Izzy actually acts as barrier aggression that she's seen, and it's, it's quite common in dogs that act like Izzy, basically any kind of containment, whether it's being leashed in a fenced-in area, we probably all have seen dogs that bark excessively when they're in a fenced-in area. Anyway, this is what Izzy does, and she doesn't recommend anything like that, other than being leashed to us in our control, and she's put us through a series of activities where the leash is actually roped around you and, and secured around my body, Mark's body, and we've, we're teaching her commands that she's learning immediately in the privacy of our backyard, and then she's got us going through a series of events to, to help her with that impulse control that she has in the, her distractibility around, around things that she shouldn't be distracted by. But aside from this, really, Izzy is a gentle and a sweet dog, and she's shown no signs of aggression ever towards people, unfortunately, like I said, it's just, it's just been to Miles, and a dog trainer has outlined a pretty significant lengthy training... And our dog trainer has outlined a pretty significant lengthy training plan that she's monitoring with us and following up with us. And I provided the officer with the plan that Melissa gave us. And we see her in a few weeks again for our, our next follow-up. And she's quickly taken to the training. And, you know, our plan is that, you know, given the fact that our trainer has said even a fenced-in area in our backyard wouldn't be in her best interest, she is recommending that we always just, always have her tied to us, you know, in, in the way that we've been training her. So, I think, Mark, is there anything else that I need to say?
No, I think you covered it.
Okay.
Things have been accurate.
Yeah, so. And we'll, we'll never-
Do you agree with what she said? You know, as far as accurate statements and stuff?
Oh, I, I, I don't know any different. I, I, we don't, we don't know each other, so.
Yeah.
I'm assuming she's telling the truth then?
Yeah. No, no, I'm, I'm not that, but as far, you know, of what happened is-
Oh, what happened to Miles?
Yeah, yeah, this is, okay.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, I don't know her, so I don't know if Izzy's, you know, been aggressive to other dogs or-
Yeah, yeah.
But, but the thing is that I'm, I'm concerned-
I, I think after, after hearing what her plan is, I think if you could get up and ask, you know, tell us what you'd like to see, okay? Back, back in your court. Okay? Well, listen to what she'd like for a plan and-
My name's Tom Martin. I live at one eighty-six Middle Road. And what we asked for in the letter is that Izzy, when she is outside, is in a fenced-in area. And if she is walking, that she has a muzzle on her.
Okay.
Quite frankly, I would be concerned, I mean, it's, Izzy's a very strong dog. And I've had dogs that, you know, unexpectedly jerk you and you're off. And it does not take long for that dog to pounce on another dog. And, you know, it did quite a bit of damage to Miles. And, and it's affected him as to how he gets, you know, around other dogs now. He is, is afraid of other dogs.
Okay.
So.
All right. Yeah, no, try, yeah.
I acknowledge your concerns as well. And I think that's the advantage of working with a trainer. I've been, I've had, I've always had dogs and I've never had the need to call a trainer. So, I just instinctively do what I do with dogs. Izzy, given her background, she was, you know, we rescued her. You don't know what their experiences were. So, having had Melissa, I've come to understand a lot more. And initially, when she had us practicing with leash around my body, I had similar concerns. But I think I've, what I've learned is being proactive to the point where, yes, I'm totally aware of Izzy's body language as well as what's in her surroundings. And, and I'm being proactive and not, like, if I see anything that I feel would be, she would be sensitive to, I immediately take her in another direction. And she's so observant of commands now, even in the short period of time that I've been doing this with her, that I feel confident and my trainer is working with me on contingency plans. In other words, if, if my trainer sees her doing anything that she doesn't think is making progress towards what we want, she has alternative plans for us to be trying in addition to, you know, medication. If that's the route that, you know, if she's nervous around anything, you know. And so, I feel like I'm being very proactive in her behavior without exposing her to other animals. Because all this training is going on right now in my backyard with Izzy, with people I know and their dogs as well. So, it's not, so I feel like the prognosis is good. My trainer feels as though the prognosis is good, given all the work that she's done with her as well, so.
All right. I, I just got to give a statement based on my observations of things in the past, okay? And would it be possible for you to, like, fence in your backyard? I'm not a big proponent of electronic fences because what happens is, the dog runs through it and then he can't get back in. And that's just a, a thing that I've seen happen, okay? And if a dog, a dog is running full speed, a lot of times it gets through the fence before, you know, that they have a problem. And I don't know if that would be a possible solution or not. I'm asking that.
Probably not for us. Melissa did say that if, if your board did say that we needed to do that, so be it. We'd put one in, obviously, for her, but then we would be with her all the time. So, we don't want to perpetuate this aggression. Because if she's behind a fenced-in area, regardless of the size, and we're not in that area with her, she's still going to act out, you know, in what appears to be an aggressive way. So, she would not recommend that. She wants, or if you decided that that's what you thought was in everyone's best interest, then we would be, be out there with her when she's there too.
Well, he, he mentioned that he'd feel safer if the dog was in a muzzle when it was out and about. And in the past, in the past, we've, we've prescribed muzzles for, for dogs.
Yeah. And Melissa did talk to us about a muzzle.
Yeah.
And Carol let us borrow her muzzle as well and we tried that out. She doesn't take to it like you can imagine any dog wouldn't. But our Melissa, Melissa, our trainer, suggested, I think Carol might know what, like a ca- cage or a... It's different from the one that you gave us.
Right, it's different. It's called a, I'll think of it.
It looks like, it looks like, like-
It looks like a barrel and, and they can still drink, breathe good out of it.
Yeah, and she's-
My friend has one, yes.
Right, right. So, she said that it's just more gentler and kinder to the dogs. And, you know, she would suggest that, you know, if we're out in a pu- public area where there are other dogs, that, that we might want to be using that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think Carol worked with some other people not too long ago. And what she worked with the people is the muzzle became a reward. Every time they put the muzzle on, the dog got a treat and that type of thing. And that worked out pretty good, didn't it, Carol?
Yeah, that, I don't think we'll ever have that dog in here again. I mean, the people. I don't think that will ever be the issue again.
Yeah, those people, they went through a muzzle. They went through a back collar. And they've made, they've done a lot of work and again, with help from dog experts, so, anyway.
I would say that, you know, as opposed to having, you have to put in a fence, as long as you're, if you're going to do your training and have her on leash like that, if she had a muzzle on outside, then that would prevent her from biting my dog at least.
I mean, my issue is, this isn't the first time. It's the second time.
Yep.
That it happened. And, you know, I just don't want it a third time.
Yep.
And I'm sorry, people can say whatever they want about dogs, but dogs are animals. And you don't know, no one knows what a dog is actually going to do.
It's hard to predict, yeah.
Very hard to predict. And they can switch like that.
Yep.
And they are fast and they're strong. And it's hard to, you know, before you know it, it's happened again.
Would you be confident for them trying the muzzle routine?
I, I-
Muzzle and a leash, you know?
I, I would say, you know, a muzzle is, is the minimum. But I don't want to see that dog on a leash out in front of the house.
Oh, no, we would never leave for a long again. She'll be with us. That's the issue. Yeah, that's the issue. I think maybe when she's-
Well, even, well, he was in the yard when it happened.
Yeah.
So, he was attending the dog.
No, but he wasn't leashed and he wasn't-
Well, he was leashed and, and-
Yeah, you're right. And I, I opened up the door. I clipped it on. She took off like a bat out of hell and I was, I didn't know why. And I looked around the corner and there she was, making a beeline for the Martins and the four dogs. And, you know, it's accurate what they described. She broke the leash. She got a good gallop, you know, fifty feet. And you find the weakest part of a leash. But I, I think what we're trying to-
Could you get the microphone too, so that it can be heard?
Mark down the two twenty-three Middle Road. What we're trying to say is, from what we've learned, and we didn't know this prior to, this cage thing wouldn't be something that we use. We were told, and it's an inconvenience in my opinion, but we were told, you need to have the leash, a strap around you with your dog in direct contact at all times. And I mean, there's nothing easier than being able to clip up your leash on a dog and let him go and go back in the house and go to work or whatever. And she's recommending absolutely against that, that whether the dog be off the property or be on our property, she says we need to be with her a hundred percent just because of what this barrier aggression or whatever she's learned and got herself into. So, I think it's going to be time before we can train her that she's more attentive to our commands and it's going to be on the leash no matter what. When she's completely trained, she's going to be there a hundred percent. And that's what we've been told. And we want to keep our dog and we don't want the dog, you know, pissing people off in the neighborhood. That's the last thing you want, you know, is for somebody to make up their mind about you or your dog and, you know, have words between you. We're sorry it happened. And we, we acknowledge the fact that it did happen twice. It's one dog. She's never showed any aggression towards another dog in that way or she's, and she's not a threat to a human in the community. And I, I don't know if Doreen said it, but I wanted to point out that Mr. Martin was able to grab her by the leash, I'm sorry, the collar, and buck her up with her two front legs off the ground when the situation happened before I was able to get there. And she didn't reaggr- redirect her aggression at Mr. Martin. And we didn't even understand what this was all about till we got to the trainer and we told her the story, oh, did he bite the, the people? So, there's a lot going on here. It's directed at this one dog, the only dog, and-
And we feel bad about that. We take, we're really taking the steps to-
You know, it, it is, it has gotten to the point where we won't walk down past your house.
And I'm sorry about that. I truly am.
And, and here's Helen's daughter who won't run by your house because she's afraid of your dog as well. I mean, there's people near, and I'm not, but, so it's just, I mean, it's just-
You know, I've, I've walked by your house without the dog and the dog rushing like he did, the, you know, like she did for Miles, rushing to the end of the, the thing.
Yeah, we acknowledge that.
And just totally, then just jerking.
She gets distracted and I acknowledge that.
And I don't know, it's not like you have a barrier there. There's no fence there. And I, I just, I'm not sure what, what would happen, you know?
Well, we were told not to have her in the front, only to walk her in the back, be in direct contact with her the whole time. She is a dog. I acknowledge what the Martins have said, that she barks. She barks at runners. She barks at other dogs, just like the neighbor across the street. I mean, there is no leash law in town. He's got two dogs that run free and they do their own set of barking. Even when I get on the property, I can't approach my neighbor until he whistles, you know?
I agree, I agree with you.
Hey, I'm on your side. That's a whole nother issue. We can all agree on that.
All right. So, let's do, stick to this one. We have enough problems.
I'm saying that the, the dogs, I acknowledge that the Martins are saying. Again, we were told that was the first thing, okay, we'll put her in the back. We'll put her on a leash. Trainer said, no, she needs to be in the back, in your control a hundred percent of the time, not clipping her on a leash and having her go free. And that's what we've come to learn. Because we were amenable to having the fence. And a buddy of mine says, oh, before you buy that, go to the hearing and talk to the trainer. So, we've held off on, on the kennel. And I think we've acknowledged tonight that the dog trainer said, that's not what you do. I mean, unless you want to box in the kennel so that she can't see through it. But who wants to do that where you can't see the dog? The whole idea is to have your dog out in the, the air and looking around. And that's what's bugging her, the ability to see runners and other dogs walking by on the street. So, she says, keep her in the backyard under your own control. And when you walk her on the street, obviously, she's going to be in the, your own control, you're, under your own control.
And I think the one thing that's different from the, the two ways she's been before is she's actually going to be strapped to either one of us or whoever else learns.
And it's going to be a strap. Before it was a, you know, the retractable leash. And I'm not real big on that because when that gets jolted at the end, you know, you don't know what, what's going on when that thing winds up. So, what we've learned is, not only that's not good, but obviously, the, the line, the nylon line that I had bought that became abraded as it dragged over the driveway over the course of time. And that's what, you know, went into being weakened and causing the problem. So, we know that a strap is the answer now. And the harness, not even a collar, but a harness now.
Let's, I think, I think, I think you really have to talk right now. We have to come to some sort of conclusions. I mean, for me, and everyone's heard this before at every dog hearing, I'll probably say that the next dog hearing, I've been around dogs all my life, especially Labradors. And there's been issues, especially with dogs in a hunting situation when there's multiple dogs and they can fight. But the problem is, these people had their dogs leashed and the dog was on a public way or public property, wasn't even passing on your private property. And it happened twice. So, it's, it's really, whatever we come to tonight, it's got to be agreed upon and it's got to be something pretty succinct and stops the issue. I, I have a sneaky suspicion, at least for me, especially while this training is going on, I'm, I'm going to kind of push towards a muzzle, but it's up for the rest of the board. But, and maybe when the training is complete and it seems that there's been significant progress, if it's leased to you directly like you talked about, that might be a different way to go about it too. But, I mean, these are, this is what we're all here for. And it, and it, muzzles are tough. So, I mean, it's for you guys to decide right now. There's a complaint and then it's for us to kind of pick up on your cues. Lori and Tom, are you going to be significantly at ease if the dog is on a body leash without a muzzle?
Can you just speak with us talking? Can I, can I speak?
Go ahead. Take your time.
I mean, I've been listening to both of you and you seem like really nice people. And you've certainly gone to the effort of hiring a trainer for Izzy, which I think is a really positive step. I guess, in my mind, I'm thinking, I want to believe you. I won't take Miles down there for a long time, but maybe I can walk by and see how it goes and see if she's out and if she's reactive. And if she isn't, then, you know, we'll see how it goes. I want to believe you. I want to believe that you're-
I don't like that, that you feel you can't walk by the house. That's not right. And I, and I want that to be overcome.
You know, you know, you and I have been through this twice now because my husband wasn't there the first time. I've been through it twice with it and it's so traumatic. And it's, it's so traumatic.
And your neighbor was accurate. I came out there and I kicked my dog a number of times to try to get her off and grab Izzy, just like your husband did, by the collar and so.
But, you know, so, so I guess like all things, you know, time, hopefully, if things go the way you, you planned, we'll heal everything. And I'll just have to see. I mean, I do jog and I'd love to be able to jog down that way and walk down that way, which I haven't done. But, but, you know, I, I, I would be willing to try it. But I would say that, you know, like all of us, if we get busy, I mean, we do have an invisible fence for our yard and our dogs stay in the fenced-in area. But if you have to, you know, if for some reason she has to be outside in the front yard chained up, then you need to have a muzzle on her. Like, I just don't-
I can just tell you that, I mean, it's been very traumatic and emotional for us as well. And I would never take that chance again. She'll be with either one of us, strapped to either one of us, or she'll be in the house. I mean, she's happy in the house. I think the officer that came for the summons, we knocked on the door and of course, she barked like all dogs bark. And we just said crate. She goes right in her crate because that's where her homas opened. So, we'll just keep her in the house.
Well, I mean, I think at least, and I can't speak for the board, but at least for myself, I'm kind of trying to take my lead from you guys as neighbors or close neighbors or whatever. And I think Lori, you're the first person that encountered this and you're alone. So, where are we? Are we at a place where if the dog's in the front yard, he's going to be wearing a muzzle? And if he's in the backyard on a body leash, he's going to not need one? Where are we? Tell us what's going on. And, and if there's another incident, then, if there's another incident, it's real serious.
I mean, I, I would say, I would say that in this period of, of training, that if the dog's out, what, you know, there was the-
It's a basket bill. It's what it's called, basket bill.
Basket, you know, that they use that.
Yeah.
And then when the trainer, you know, I'm assumi- I don't know the trainer. I'm assuming she's a certified trainer and would-
There's no certification for that. There's no certification for them.
Or, or, you know, if she's able to say, okay, at the end, I think this is okay, then the muzzle can come off and, and, but it's strapped, the dog's strapped to them.
One thing, I think you said dog strapped and I think, I think there was a learning process here on, you're going to inspect the strap and make sure it's not frayed anymore. And if you, and if you don't tie the dog out in the yard, it's probably not going to get frayed, but I mean, I think, I'm hoping this was a learning experience on that.
Oh, it has and as Doreen said, it hasn't been easy.
Yeah, okay.
Between us and, you know, waiting them on for the hearing and wondering about the uncertainty and wondering if, you know, you had to introspectively look at yourself as dog owners and realize that you've made a couple of mistakes. And, you know, I think this training of a pet, and it's been, it's my first dog, probably should have happened right from the get-go when we owned her. But like so many people, they have a pet, seems like a nice pet, you know, dog comes to you, you feed it, you know, you put it on a leash and you add barks at a few dogs and, you know, you got a few basic commands down, but we've realized that there's a lot more to it.
But you see, you also have to remember for Tom and Lori, they feel the same way about their dog and their dog was on a leash and on public property. So, and it's happened twice. So it's hard, I mean, I've, it's hard for me when a dog's on leash and he gets nailed twice, it gets, it gets to me.
Right there in the exact same location, both incidences, right at the foot of the driveway on the public road. I mean, he couldn't have got closer to the problem.
Now, what are we doing? Are we happy with, I mean...
So, and, and the leash is strapped, I mean, because dogs can pull away. I mean, I've had a dog pull.
These dogs are being this strong and this...
Those dogs are strong and they can pull away, but if it's strapped to it where if you lose, lose the leash out of your hands, at least it's not, you know, going too far.
Carol?
It's a special training leash that...
If the, if the leash is strapped to them and they are indeed using the basketville muzzle, it's secured around the collar and there's a loop part that goes up, a leather piece that goes up over the head and also secures to the collar, so the dog can't take its paws and try to pull this off of him.
Okay.
It's totally safe, so even if he, for some ungodly reason, slipped on the ice and he's down on the ground and the dog takes off, it cannot, the force of it hitting someone might, you know, knock him over, but there's no way the dog can bite.
Okay.
It can breathe, it can lick water through it, there's a space like that, but it cannot open its mouth to bite. And I really feel that the neighborhood people should not have to fear walking on our streets. I mean, they should, she shouldn't have to jog, go running and have to avoid going by their house. I mean, everybody has the right, you know, to our town. So I'm in favor of the leash on him and the, you know, the basketville. And that's the only one I would suggest, that particular one. That's my opinion, it's up to you gentlemen.
But is that during the training?
David, David.
Or is that all that's on?
I just want to say that it seems like there's no dispute on the facts of the case and the question is, what are we going to do about it? And it seems like, from my perspective, you know, if the dog's under control all the time when it's outside with, I like the name basketville, by the way, it kind of reminds me of an old movie, Hounds of the Basketville. Is that where the name came from? I don't know. But anyway, it seems to me that, you know, the proposal of, you know, a serious leash and I, like Jeff, had a lot of experience with dogs myself and I know with those retractable ones, how even my little 14-pound sheltie could pull it out of my hands sometimes if I wasn't expecting it.
I've had one of my old dogs pull it out of my hand.
Yeah, yeah. So I think, you know, the proposal we had before is that we go with a serious leash at all times when the dog's outside with the muzzle. Seems like a good interim step and then we'll see if things get better or get worse and if necessary, you know...
And down the road, if they feel that, I'd be willing to put my dog up as bait. No, I would be willing to use my dog to walk by their house just to see after the training period, but I would not want to see the dog off of that until we were 100% sure that everything is okay. That's if it's already with everybody.
I think that's a great suggestion. I hope that works for you guys.
I'll, I'll put it in the form of a motion then, from almost what David said and what Cal recommended first, that we, the dog is on a body leash and a basketville muzzle when he's out. Second?
Second.
Any other discussion here? No?
Sounds like both parties have come together and both parties have done an awful lot to try and alleviate this, so.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's good. And now, we went through this with another dog and I hope that as you people go walking, you'll stop and visit, okay? And you need to do that. We need to get this back, your neighbors, okay? That's all.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you.
So the, the name of the dog, the weight and everything?
Oh, it's in the, can you tell the, yeah, answer those questions?
Izzy is five years old and she's about 50 pounds and she's about 10 X.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. That's that one.
All right. Thank you all.
Where's the other one?
Thank you.
Okay, now the next one is Durazio? And Tracy slash Riley? Okay. Who filed the complaint? Okay, could you come?
My name's Gerard Riley. I'm here with my wife, Leslie. We live at 17 Parker River Drive and we're here tonight to address a situation that's been escalating since, since last July with our neighbors regarding their dog, Trooper, which is a German Shepherd, rather large aggressive dog, with our dog, who is a half week terrier, half Airedale. His name is Sammy and she's about approximately 50 pounds. You know, I'm coming here tonight basically looking for the, for the board's help to, to provide a safe environment for my family, for pets, for the neighborhood. Beginning last July, Trooper was out, out and about, either was out walking or got loose from, from our neighbor's house who lived directly next door, came charging through our front yard, which is a lengthy yard, leapt up onto the window sill and attempted to bust into the house through that screen that I bought, busted through the screen to get that dog in our own house. The neighbors were mildly apologetic the next day and offered to pay for, pay for a screen replacement. Frankly, my wife and I didn't take a lot of, a lot of solace in their apology and didn't have any confidence that this wouldn't happen again. We just didn't feel like we had any other choice but to, to contact Carol, the animal control officer, and make her aware of the situation. It was, it was dangerous. The next day, this is a, kind of about a year-long now situation, the next day after we called animal control, our neighbor confronted me in our driveway enraged, screaming to me that it's on, it's on, it's on, obviously a threat of retaliation for us calling animal control on this matter. Over the summer of 2013, several other occasions, Trooper had charged at our dog on our own property. We keep our dog leased on our, on our yard. Several times while our kids, who are 12 and 13, 11 and 13 at the time, were walking our dog up and around the cul-de-sac leased the whole time, Trooper would come at them several times during the course of the summer. Christmas week, two days before Christmas, Trooper came charging through our front yard again, attacking our dog. Again, we called Carol. Again, on March 18th, Trooper came into the yard chasing after our dog. My son Travis had to chase Trooper off with a baseball bat. He's only 13-year-old kid, he's not a big guy. This is 100-pound aggressive German Shepherd charging at him full speed. Travis is scared witless, busting a baseball bat to chase this dog away. It's gotten to the point now that we have to leave a baseball bat on our front porch to defend ourselves against the, this dog coming onto our property constantly. As recently as Sunday, April the 6th, my kids were out on our front yard, playing with our dog, again, just on our own property, playing catch and with the tennis ball and the stick. Trooper again got loose, charged onto our property and this time bit our dog, broke the skin. We have pictures to show it. We made Carol, Carol, the dog officer, aware of it. She recommended we bring the dog to the vet and we brought the dog to the vet to get checked out. Carol informed us that she would pay a copy of the invoice with the, with the neighbors to be, to be reimbursed, which obviously hasn't been yet. Later that same day, our neighbor, Kim, who's here, her latest obscenely laced rant was a threat that she would quote, "Be so happy when I drive you out of here, I can't wait until you move," was her threat that day across the driveways. And Nick was standing right there, rolling his eyes, she testified to the exact same thing.
You'll have your turn.
This is about the whole thing?
Okay.
Okay? Many other times, I don't even know how many times, and I've, we've called Carol and it's all been documented, that they'll go off for the day to work or on the boat or whatever, typically on weekends, early in the morning, not returning till late afternoon, they'll put their dog in their dog pen, which is, abuts our property directly below our bedroom window, 15 feet from our house, and the dog will bark for six, seven, eight hours constantly. I have a recording that I gave to Carol the other day, which is why she called them. Just this past Saturday, Trooper, I was out in my backyard cleaning up and, and just straightening up the yard, doing some raking, from nine o'clock in the morning on, from nine till noon, Trooper was on the other side of the fence barking constantly, three hours. Now, they weren't home, so they can't say it didn't happen because you weren't even home, okay? The dog was barking for three hours. I held up the phone to Carol and said, this is what I have to listen to every weekend. Carol called the house, asked them to bring the dog in. The dog was quickly brought in. In retaliation for me calling Carol yet again, they replaced Trooper's barking with a large boombox directed pointed, directly at our house with music blasting for about two hours. Finally, by mid-afternoon, the music went off, all was quiet, and only because when I looked out, the car was gone and they had gone out for the afternoon. Later that day, we were out and about in our little fire pit, enjoying a quiet evening with the kids and the dog on our own property, not bothering anybody. Once they realized we were home, the boombox came out again for another hour of heavy metal music concert. At that point, I had no choice, I called the police and they came down. Two cruisers and four policemen came down, addressed the situation. We got some bony baloney excuse about them polishing their car, listening to music. I don't want a lot here, I just want a, a safe neighborhood for my kids to go and play in their own yard without fear of being attacked, without, without having to worry about listening to our neighbor obscenely laced rants. It's, it's not a safe environment and, you know, I think if we don't do something here tonight, one of my kids or my dog or another neighborhood kid is going to be bitten and we'll be back here again and we're going to say we should have done something. Given that this dog is a danger and what I feel is a public nuisance, with its history of biting, charging and constant barking, I'm requesting the town mandate the dog, whenever the dog is outside, it be leased, tied down at all times and muzzled. That would fix the barking and the attacking. Furthermore, I'm going to request that the town mandate their dog pen, which directly abuts our property, these people have a two-acre lot, just like we do, is moved as far away as possible from our property line so it doesn't abut our property. The constant barking from seven o'clock Sunday morning when we're trying to sleep, there's no need of it. At the advice of our lawyer, he did not accompany us tonight, hoping things could be resolved with a mediation or by, or by the town, hoping that this doesn't become a legal matter. If the dog issues, harassment and threats continue, we will proceed with every legal option we have to put an end to the harassment. We should not be worried about our dog every time she's outside. Our children should be able to go in their own yard with their own dog or friends without worrying for their safety. They should be able to walk up and down the street without fear of attack and we should be able to have, be, enjoy our own backyard without continuous barking and harassment. I'm asking the town to have them move the crate, the dog cage, to muzzle the dog and require the dog be tied at all times. And if we can't come to an agreement tonight, we'll proceed with whatever we have to do to get this done.
Okay. All right.
Nicholas Durazio, 19 Parker River Drive neighbors. There's two instances, instances that I'm aware of. Last summer, Trooper, my shepherd, year and a half old puppy, he did break that screen as mentioned, that is accurate. Most recently, he did bite their animal. He was trying to play with the dog. He loves to play with the dog. They used to play last summer and there was no issues. Because of these two instances, I've spent probably about $1,500, chain link fence, underground fences, bark collars, remote collars, you name it, I had it. I believe I've actually fixed this problem. The last instance, my seven-year-old son actually let the shepherd out accidentally. So inside the house, I have actually made other barriers. So there's a gate before a door and so forth, and start to him not to let the animal out. I do have a kennel and it does, it is on the property line. I do have an issue with moving that kennel. I'm a disabled veteran, it is in a place that gives an animal shelter and easy access. I'm actually in the process of registering him with the ADA as a service dog. I've actually, I spoke to the animal control officer, the animal control officer told me that she thinks I'm doing all I can at this point.
I'm his wife. This, this whole thing has started because myself and this woman right here...
Name and address of the...
My name's Kim and the last name's Durazio, 19 Parker River Drive. This whole thing is between me and her. Her kids actually came, come, came to my house last summer, they've slept at my house, they've played with both of the dogs. I wish I had my 12-year-old son here tonight because they've, it, this is insane to me. The, the kids have been around the dogs, the kids have, we have a puggle. The puggle and him play constantly. So I really, truly, honestly think this is, this is an issue between me, myself and her because she and I do not get along and we probably will never get along, but this is about our dog and, you know, if they have issues with me, then they need to go forward with that, not with the dog. I have a problem with it because she had no problem with the dog last year.
Before the dog attacked.
Before the dog attacked what?
How it got...
When was this? Recently?
Last July. Did you listen to what I just said?
The dog did not? Did you come to us? Did you say where should that dog come?
He's not an aggressive dog.
From last year?
So we'll keep the, keep the conversation, no, no. You'll get a chance to come up and talk later, okay?
Yeah, please, you're addressing us, not each other, okay?
I'm a little bit shaken here because this, I just feel that this issue is between myself and them, not the dog. Because the dog has been around the kids, the dog has been over on their property playing with their dog and now it's a problem because we've had an argument and it's ongoing.
Okay, I'm very puzzled by this because we have abundant documentation here about what's happened to their dog.
Absolutely, and not once did they mention anything to us. Not once. I've gone over to talk to her, I went over to talk to her about the screen. I apologized, I said I was sorry, you know, the dog wanted to play with their dog, our puggle goes over there to play with their dog. I don't, I mean, I think this is just...
I believe this one had taken every preventative measure to...
No, I believe that. What I'm having trouble with actually is the inconsistency. We've got two stories here that seem very, very different, okay? And obviously, we've got to be judge and jury on this sort of thing. And so I'm, again, I'm really puzzled by what you're telling me because it's not consistent with the paper document. because it's not consistent with the paper documentation we have on this situation. And even if the dogs did get along when your dog was a puppy or whatever, you know, we have to deal with the present situation.
Oh, I understand.
And, you know, what I'm seeing now is this is, whether you two have problems or not between of you, that's not the issue. We've got a dog that's been attacking another dog. And just like the previous case, you know, we're going to have to figure out what to do about it, you know? We're not going to let this just go, do nothing is not an option in these kinds of cases, right?
I understand.
Carol, could you, tell us your observations of when you got involved with this a little bit?
Well, unfortunate, unfortunately, when I went to speak to them, the dog was behind the chain link, chain link enclosure, and usually they're extremely aggressive when the dog's behind there. I know my shepherd was. He didn't care if I went in there. So, it's not inaccurate. What I would give you is not accurate, because what eyewitness was not the dog being aggressive to a stranger. He had never seen me before, and he was fine. And, you know, I asked him if he could put a no-bark collar on the dog. He said he tried others. I said, "I would be willing to lend you one of mine that I know works." And he told me he just, you know, went out and purchased one that seems to be working. And in as far as the bill, it's my error. He now has it, so blame me for.
Joe, can I ask you a question?
Yeah. This is directed, you know, at, at you guys, and, and, you know, in a, kind of a simple guy when it comes to these things. Was the issues, and if it's not a true observation, correct me, was the issues on their property?
Yes.
Then.
Yes.
It can't happen again.
Yes.
Understood.
Understood, absolutely, absolutely.
Can I make another?
Carol's got a point.
Just for one second.
And also, why don't you come up to the microphone?
She did bring her dog down to my house. I did see the injury. She also had her son with her, and I spoke to her son, and he talked to me like an adult, and. How old is he?
Fourteen, now. He's thirteen at the time.
Thirteen at the time, and he explained to me that he did fear the dog, because he was afraid when he was walking his dog that something would happen. So, I don't think that a thirteen-year-old should have to worry about walking his dog. And this comes from a childhood. I have no reason to believe she prompted him, because I was speaking to him and asking him questions.
Okay. All right, you've got.
So, I appreciate your statements. I don't have any couple of you, except for that. The, after the July incident with the screen, you know, I mulled it over for a few days, had a few nightmares of the, some bad things that could happen, and I called Carol at that point, so it was a few days delay. The next time I saw Kim, I let her know that I called the dog officer, and she was in her car. I was walking the dog, and to say that she was irate is an understatement. And then the next time she saw my husband, she went off on him, but that's beside the point. Neither of them were present at any time that their dog has come onto our property to attempt. The first time in July, I know she told me she was in the house vacuuming. The kid let the dog out. Other than that, I mean, it's always the kids letting the dog out, or granddad lets the dog out by accident, but neither of them are ever there. To say that he's playfully, play, playing with Sammy is unbelievable, because you can't imagine the growling and snarling that goes along with it. So, that's my statement.
Okay.
I, I believe that is a blatant lie. She pulled me over one day and told me that she had filed a report on a bulldog that was at the previous, previously at our residence. It was his ex-wife's dog that had bitten her child a year and a half previous. She felt that she needed to report this. That's what she had told me when she pulled me over.
That's a misunderstanding.
No, that's a blatant lie.
Because what I, what I said.
We're not going to put up.
Can I just, what I said is, I felt that I had.
Oh, yeah, sure, I'll take those.
If you've got something to say, you can say it so we can all hear.
You just told me to shut up.
Excuse me.
Now, wait a, wait a, she's, she's speaking to the board.
I was anxious to speak. What I said on that day in July is that I had to go to the dog officer about Trooper, and I did so because my older son Travis had been bit by one of their dogs, Canyon, several years ago, and we didn't do anything about it. And then my, what?
Wait, wait, she's speaking to the board. You speak to us.
It was in, at your residence.
You speak to us.
It was at their residence.
Yeah.
Canyon bit Travis. And then, I don't know, maybe a year and a half ago, she seems to remember it more than I do, my younger son Justin was bit by their other dog, Meadow, and he had to go to the doctor, get a tetanus shot. I mean, the dog did break the skin, so now this was the third incident, and I felt I needed to report it, and that's what I told her on that day. Clearly a misunderstanding.
And did you have anything else you want?
Like I said, I believe I've resolved all the issues with the animal as far as him getting off the property. I'm actually in the process of safeguarding, just chain linking the entire fence. I've already started doing the perimeter of my residence. Just as a failsafe, I have electronic collars on him, which actually work very well, surprise. And he will actually turn around the second I give him a warning, or if need be, is out. Like I said, I, I believe I fixed all the issues, and there is no more concern. I understand their concerns. I just don't think that there's going to be an issue again.
If the, if the issues were resolved, like he says they were, we would have had to put up three hours of barking last Saturday and seven more hours of barking on Easter Sunday.
I just pushed a new model bark collar the day after Carol, the animal control officer called me.
Wait a, wait a, no, no.
I, I tried underground fence. That didn't work, so I put up new fences. I've got that remote collar. I'm doing everything I can, and I honestly think that I have resolved at this point, that there will not be another issue in the future.
I think Jeff's point earlier was, one thing that's really disturbing here is, this is a situation where, through whatever reason, your loss of control of the dog has allowed the dog to go onto their property and cause some problems, okay? That, that's a problem. Yeah, that's definitely a problem. And, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Like I said, when these issues kind of come about, they get clearer as things unravel, and you have to go back to the basics, and for me, the basics is the private property. Is the intention to build a barrier fence or to build a fence large enough to contain him?
Yes.
Meaning a square?
Yes.
It is?
Oh, besides, I have the kennel, and I'm also going to put chain link around the entire.
Yard.
Entire yard, yes.
Okay. One thing that, that one of their requests was that the kennel get moved not near their house, okay? Now, now, you said it's an inconvenience to you, but with a kennel, it sounds like it's an inconvenience to them right now.
I didn't, I don't believe it will be anymore, as I have the bark collar that's actually working on both animals now.
Okay, and if you.
I've had it out the past couple of days. I've been out there where it usually barks a bit when I'm working on it. That stopped.
Yeah.
I really don't believe there will be an issue anymore.
Just for a point of clarification, and then I think Joe's conversation was pertinent. When will the fence be done?
I just started putting it up literally today. I, I had a section on the perimeter, I'm sorry, on the perimeter, on the property line, just as a barrier at this point, but now I'm going to continue.
And how tall?
Sorry?
How tall?
It's about seven, seventeen?
So, that's a good responsible fence.
Okay.
Just a point of information.
Let me just, let me just finish my statement. So, what I'm driving at is, and it's just my thought, it seems to me, barring conversation about noise, that if there is a fenced-in yard with a seven-foot fence, that seems to be a pretty secure barrier on keeping the dog on their property. So, I have a little bit more comfort, at least me, when the fence is done. Until the fence is done, there's probably got to be more containment issues such as, you know, leashing and other things.
Absolutely.
But that's just me. The rest of the board has to talk, and you guys have to, you know, go from where you're going to go, too.
Just a point of information, as far as fences, yeah. And I can provide the invoice if you'd like. I just spent twenty-five hundred dollars two weeks ago to put up a six-foot stockade fence along, around the, the property line as well. Six-foot stockade fence still doesn't stop eight hours of barking. Now, he can says it, he can say it's working all he wants, but it may be one day or two days it's been working. This was as recently as last Saturday and Sunday, the dog was barking for hours on end. When they go to work, the dog barks for hours on end. It's a nuisance, and it, it has to stop, and nothing short of moving that dog over to the other side of the property is going to satisfy it.
Do you want to add, Chris?
You come up from.
You better come up.
Come up and identify yourself.
And, and do me a favor. We were kind of talking about the dog fence, and then it went to the noise of the dog. So, when we go back to this, we're going to have to talk about what your, you know, how the issues are going to be resolved, those two issues.
I'm Dave Drazio. I'm, I own the property on Nineteenth Parker River Drive. Last Saturday, I was working on a boat. You're working on the front yard. Instead of coming over and asking me to put the dog in the house, you called the dog officer.
Wait, 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 he's talking.
This thing is blown out of proportion. It's more of a cat bite than it is a dog bite. The topography of my, my property is really not conducive to moving the kennel. Can we do it? I can put it in the front yard. I can put a fence up that's ten feet high. It's not going to stop the dog from barking. The fence is not going to do this. The dog collars are, all right? He's improved vastly over the past week. I don't know where he's going. All I want to do is just be left alone, all right? Not my animal, his animal. But I just wanted to let you know that there's more going on here than, let me see.
Thank you, Joe.
Dave, you know, normally I would be happy to address you and, and, and talk to, to Dave if there was an issue with the dog barking, and previously, that's exactly what I would have done. But as this incident has escalated, the dog officer Carol has instructed us to not speak to them directly, because it always winds up in a, in a shouting match, usually a one-way shouting match, so we've been instructed not to speak to them.
I, we're talking about the fence.
Yeah, I'm pushing, I'm, I'm just kind of keeping it simple and see if simple works. I mean, when we address the issues, Carol, behind us with the fence, that seemed to work pretty good for, what was that dog's name, Joe?
Titus.
Titus? I mean.
Yes, Titus.
If the fence is in place, and this is directed at you folks, too, and the fence contains a dog, that takes care of at least one issue, which is the dog not entering your property, which should alleviate the fear of dog attacks. That's, does that seem reasonable?
In theory.
Where, where would you go beyond that?
I have zero confidence that the dog won't get loose again, because it's happened many times, not once or twice, many times.
Was the fence in place?
That, that dog cage that I had, there's been there for years since they got the dog.
No, but I mean, if it's a seven-foot fence around the yard, it, was that in place?
We built up some thirty feet of chain link fence today.
Please go to the microphone.
I'm sorry. There is a fence put up. I think anything over six feet requires a building permit. It's definitely not seven feet. I mean, that's there, standard chain link, right, I would guess?
It's actually six, seven feet. I hate to measure it.
You were work, I, I, what's your estimation of the height of the fence? You were working on it.
Right, it's not as high as I am. I'm just a little bit short of sixty.
Okay, all right.
Will you see where this is going to?
I just want to follow up on something Jeff said, and that is that, as you heard with our previous situation, you know, typically in a case like this where the dog has been, you know, biting people or dogs, you know, that the first step is containment, and then if the dog's off the property with the muzzle, that's been sort of our standard thing, and then, you know, I agree with Jeff that there's also, barking is also an issue that we've had to deal with in the past, but I think it's good to first, at least for our board, to reach some agreement on the sort of, well, I'll call it containment problem, the, the fencing and the leash. And again, you know, this is the kind of thing that if the dog owner doesn't comply with what we do, then we come back to another hearing, and, you know, we can escalate from there. And as you know, you know, we have the authority to have a dog put down. We've, since I've been on the board, we've never had to reach that point, but I'm just saying that we have a set of stages that we can go through. So, you know, we try to be reasonable from both sides' perspective to, you know, tell the dog owner that they have to do such and so, and in most cases, we haven't had a problem. They've done whatever we've asked them to do, so.
We're not here to have any dogs put down. That's never been a consideration. That's not our, our end goal here. What I'm asking is, this dog crate that they currently have, abuts our property. We have a pool area that we have spent a lot of money on. We have a low yard area and a fire pit. We like to be able to, well, have the kids play in the pool, have a picnic, enjoy our own property, our own yard, without that dog banging up against the fence, growling, barking, and generally making a nuisance of itself. We can't even enjoy our own backyard, whether that dog is fenced or not. It's abutting our property. And it's not all about just their convenience. What about our convenience?
That's right. Jeff asked the question and didn't get much of an answer, and when will the fence, the containment be completed?
As I said, I've had one up, up till I just started working more on today, moving sections. As they did put up a fence, I started moving around pieces of it. I honestly, I can't, I don't know how to give an estimation on how long it would take me, as I'm doing it myself, to get it up. It's very hard.
Would it be reasonable to say until the contain, that we put additional controls on the dog until the containment is complete?
See, I got to be honest. I'm getting a little lost. I almost feel a little like Judge Judy in that. I'm getting a little lost. It's suddenly seemed that the noise is almost more important than the dog coming over and biting your dog.
It's both.
So, we got to get into that. We got to straighten this out.
It's the first concern, of course.
It's, and you know, like, my experience in other dogs, if you get the bark collar that's right for the dog, it usually works, right, Carol? I mean, you know, that's it, and.
As I stated, I believe I fixed the issues.
Okay.
Without the chain link fence going around the perimeter, but I'm still going to do.
Now, when, when did this bark collar go on, the new one?
Approximately two or three days ago over the weekend.
Okay, was it Saturday when the barking was going on?
It was after I received a complaint from the animal control officer, yes.
Okay, so it was after that the collar went on?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Have you heard any barking since then?
I did hear barking today, yes.
I mean, was it like before?
I wasn't outside working in the yard, so I can't, I, I can't compare it to that, but. There was definitely barking. When I opened the door, the dogs started to bark.
You know, what bugs do is they bark, okay?
I understand.
No, 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 seriously, but it's the continuous annoying type thing, okay? That, you know, a dog will bark, and they always bark at the mailman for some reason, you know, and they do. And, you know, our, our, you know, quick, quick bark, it's all over, okay? But it, when they bark for hours, then that's not fair.
I had a chainsaw going today. Probably barked about five minutes with that collar running, and that was it.
Yeah, okay.
It's a progressive, increased collar, so.
Okay.
If it just keeps barking, it's more of a discipline.
Is, is there a way, on your property, is there a way to put the fence up in a way that keeps the fence more to the back? I have no idea what the yard looks like.
The problem with the property is, in my backyard, which would be the furthest point that I could put it away, one, it's on a slope, which would be, I would have trouble with. It's, it declines. And two, I couldn't put it back too far, because it goes down.
Conservation.
Into conservation land.
Now, I mean, I'm not being a wise guy. I'm, you know, but, I mean, put, put the dog right under your window. Put the fence right next to your house.
Well, we're talking about the kennel, not the fence.
That's what I meant. I meant the kennel. I mean, I'm just saying, I understand.
My house would be awesome.
What I'm saying to you is, I understand the noise concerns, but we're not there.
Right.
So, first of all, guys, you know, we should probably take these things in order. A fence is a big project.
Yes, it is.
It's an expensive project.
Yes. I pretty much have it narrowed down, but, yeah.
And the only thing is, because also not being there, if you go to the expense and time and effort to put a fence up, that's not going to stop the dog from going over the top, you've wasted your time. So, that, I'm leaving that to your judgment.
To be honest with you, I think I'm wasting my time putting the fence up. I'm doing it for, to appease and ease my neighbors' minds. I don't believe that there'll be an issue again.
We already took care of the fence issue two weeks ago. We put up a big six-foot Stargate fence and paid $2,500 and had it done.
So now I'm getting, I'm getting a little more to the issue, so it's not so much the fencing right now, as long as they can keep the dog on their side of their yard, so that it never goes into your yard, we're back to probably the noise.
I have that.
Yeah, well, Jeff, though, I do, I'm not comfortable with having a date uncertain for the completion of the fence, okay? And, you know, as someone who's done a lot of projects-
Fence didn't seem to be the issue.
No, I, I, wait, no.
That's not an issue with me.
Well, the fence doesn't completely enclose your yard at this point, and it's very easy for a dog just to kind of walk around the end of the fence, so I'm not-
As it is now, whenever he's not in the kennel, I have secured chain, I mean, it's chain.
Quarter-inch chain.
Yeah, quarter-inch chain, secured on my property, that I put him onto. He cannot get off. He cannot chew through it, he cannot, he's not coming off that chain. Like I said, the only-
And you've got an adequate collar, if he can't slip out of, okay.
Leather collar.
Does that, that's happened in other cases, right?
He's not going to collar off either.
Just remember, as you're speaking to us, or if you're speaking to us, I'm not going to be comfortable unless there's some understanding between what we're talking about between you guys.
Good luck.
Well, well, then, you know, we're going to have to go from there.
Then that's it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, at the end of the day, we have to decide.
Carol, any observations with the yard? I mean, have you been down?
And if you want to speak-
Oh, I've been there. I've seen the whole property. Well, I haven't seen behind the house, but I've been there to see where he keeps his dog. And when he says he has a proper chain, it is, you could tow a big truck with, when he's got it there for a chain. I did see the chain and everything. Whether he's got a place to move that, and that I couldn't answer.
Is the kennel chain link?
It's chain link. Oh, well, he's secured it when he's in there. He is secure.
Okay. I mean, one thing is, you could close one side off with that weaving stuff.
I provided a picture with pants, so if you want to take it with that.
Do you have the weaving in it?
It's in this package.
I have, I'm sorry, on one side of it, I have that privacy blind, so that-
Okay.
-the fence is out.
Is this what you're talking about?
Yes, it is. I believe that's.
I don't see a privacy blind there.
The animal from seeing things or-
That happened in another dog, okay?
It must be this one.
Because if he hears things, he's still going to bark, even if he can't see it.
That's why I went to-
My dogs will bark if they hear the neighbor's kids playing outside.
I think, and I think, so whenever the dog's in the yard, it's going to be in the kennel?
In the kennel or on the chain.
Or on the chain, okay?
That's what the fence is up.
Okay, just one question about the chain. What's it attached to? I've seen very strong chains.
Attached to the kennel, and it's bolted.
Okay, because, you know, many times we've seen a good spot dog just rip that connection to whatever right out of the wall, but it-
Say that.
Yeah, that's secure, so.
Okay, so that's good. So the big thing right now, if you feel the dog is secure, how about if we, that any time the dog's outside, it stay in the kennel until the containment's complete?
Or if they want to walk it?
Yeah.
Then I think the same thing we did with the previous situation.
Yeah, do you walk the dog through the neighborhood?
I run the dog down the street. I run the kennel.
Okay, so muzzle and proper strap?
That sounds reasonable.
And I guess, on the barking side, I'm willing to take a little time to see if the collar takes care of itself, or that we've got to do something.
We've had great success with bark collars in the past.
Yeah, but every dog's different. It's just like with the electric fences, right? Some of them stay in forever, others figure out within days how to get out.
Inevitably, they run through it, you know? So, anyway, all right, so.
All right, so I'll make a motion that when the animal, you know, when your dog is in the, on your property, it's either on the chain or in the kennel. And if you're off your property, then just as we did with the previous case, a good strap, leash, and a muzzle, I think will make people in the neighborhood, especially your neighbors, feel a little more comfortable about the situation.
I just have one question. We are, we travel to Beverly a lot, to my parents' house, so the dog does come with us sometimes. Does this carry on to Beverly, or can we?
No, no. This is, this is something that we do here.
This year, okay.
Yeah, okay. And the other thing is, it sounds like we're heading in the right direction on the containment. Okay, you made a motion.
Yeah, I made a motion, so I need a second or-
Yeah, second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, any other comments?
Discussion?
Discussion?
The kennel that's burdensome with noise, is your Stargate fence in front of that kennel now, too?
Yes.
And this privacy backing I see here is up on that kennel also?
I don't know, I can't see the kennel.
And so what's going to happen now is you're going to wait to see if the prevention of the barking works.
And if it doesn't?
That, come back.
You call Carol, and we'll take quick action on it, okay? Oh, no, it's an escalating situation we have.
That causes a little fear in my mind, so to be honest with you, as some of these complaints have been needless, and as you know, there's a few going on here. I don't want to see a complaint made up over barking that's not occurring.
We haven't embellished one thing. Everything here is completely accurate. We're not here for war. We want peace, we want to be able to get along with our neighbors as we did previous.
After we vote on it-
So the implication that we would lie if I'm insulted.
After we vote on it, you'll get my words of wisdom on that, okay? That comes free. All right, David's made a motion. You had discussion?
Chuck seconded it, right?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Motion.
The motion?
Okay, and the thing-
All of us vote.
What? All in favor of Dave's motion? Okay. So you know the situation you're in, and you do, and you're going to watch it, and again, you people are neighbors, okay? We got to get along, all right? And, and both people have to work at it, okay? Okay, if there's something that's just not right, like, you know, you mentioned several times that, you know, when the dog got out, you know, you had a kid or someone there that left a door open, everyone's got to be on board with us, okay? And then, you know, we want everyone to get along and, you know, all right? Okay. Thank you, people, and we hope it works out. What have we got?
I think that the-
All right, we got the, David, what we did is, we waited for you, so you could give us an update, a possibility of some grants that might be available.
Right. The one, the specific grant that I asked to be put on the agenda, I've already forgotten the official title of it, at any rate.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, it's a-
Seawell repair.
It's a dam and seawell repair and removal grant funding. And I thought, since this has no match, this is the kind of grant I like.
Yeah.
Right, because quite often with these state grants, you know, it has to be like a 50-50 match or something on the part of the town, so in, given our fiscal situation, that's, unless it can be something in kind or volunteer work, that matches for it to come by. But this one requires no match, so that immediately got me pretty interested. And of course, on both edges of town, so to speak, we have issues that potentially could come under this. I think with the ongoing studies and so forth that are happening in Plum Island right now, and also the issues of using public funds on private property and so forth, I think we're not ready out there to figure out what we want to do. So of course, I naturally started thinking about the Larkin Dam, because obviously we're under pressure from both Fish and Wildlife and Dam Safety to do something about it. And so my thought was that we would submit a proposal to do the design work for breaching. They certainly would not fund us to rebuild the dam at this stage. It doesn't commit us to breaching at this point, but it puts us in a really good position, so if we should decide that that's, you know, in the best interests of town to breach the dam, then we'd be beautifully positioned to go after any grant money to actually pay part of the cost of the actual breaching. So that's kind of how I'm thinking about this, is let's get ourselves really well-positioned, so if we decide to go that route, we can go after, you know, more grant money and really reduce the cost to the taxpayer, you know, to something, you know, that's relatively small, since, you know, it's a, we're going to have to deal with it sooner or later. I mean, even if the dam fails, we've still got to deal with it.
Maybe not.
Yeah. But?
Maybe not.
They always do, it's just a question of when. That one's in pretty bad shape.
I think, we won't get into that, but anyway, I think really the judicious thing is to see if there's any money available to do it first, and that is-
That's my attitude, it's like, you know, we can continue the debate as to what's the best approach, but this way, if we decide to breach, we're going to be in a really great position.
It's not only that, too, Dave, we find out more.
Yeah.
It gathers information.
Because in the past, the grants have been, I mean, the best grant we ever heard of before was 60 percent, and then it was 60 percent of X, because we didn't know what the total amount was going to be to do the project. And, you know, that's something that requires town meeting approval for funding.
Yeah, so this is the case, and we'll have to do some homework to find out, you know, what the cost would be.
Yeah, information is great. Make a motion, Dave.
So I make a motion that we pursue this grant opportunity and apply for a grant to do design work for breaching of the Larkin Dam.
Second.
Okay. Any comment?
No.
Makes sense to me to see what your options are.
No, we've got to find out. Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I agree with you, David. Thank you for looking into that.
Is this part of the, like, Sandy thing, or?
I don't know if this is pass-through money or not.
Is it?
Because often what happens is, some of these state programs are pass-through money from the feds.
This is the, this is Executive Office Energy and Environmental Affairs. Yeah, that's what it is, okay. So that's probably not.
I would guess not, but as I say, sometimes these programs, actually, if you look into them, they're pass, we call pass-through money, in other words, that money is given to the state, but it's up to the state to decide how to distribute it.
Yeah.
Or maybe ultimately it comes from the feds, but again, the state is the one who decides who's going to get the money and who doesn't.
Well, they've, they've kind of meshed together quite a bit on, with the, with the dams, because of its tie-in with energy now. And that they had, the head of that organization came from energy, I believe, didn't he?
Well, it was kind of the merger of two things.
Yeah.
It was a traditional environmental affairs-type agency, and then, you know, with all the interest in global warming and renewable energy, you know, as far as it be, decided to kind of merge the two into one.
Just as a further update, I met with a woman who's, she's in charge of land acquisition for Fish and Wildlife, and that doesn't meet the criteria out there.
Figures.
It's area-wise, they need so many acres. I mean, she was, she came to Newbury, we looked at it, looked at it in the map, and-
But the 500-foot setback, that particular property is probably within 500 feet of two houses, right?
Yeah.
Well, as they drain that dam down, it's going to probably make a build of a lot. It starts the setback from the river.
Quite often what happens, these things end up being wetlands, you know, as opposed to uplands that we-
But it's, it's a setback from the river, not wetlands.
Funny.
The folks upstream will have bigger lots.
No match, huh?
No match.
It's funny, the last round of the coastal resiliency Sandy money, they took the match out. So I don't know, but it seems funny it would percolate down that way. It's interesting, we should find out, it's just a tick.
All right, so we're going to look, are you going to take the lead in that, or?
Well, I will, I think probably Martha and I will have to work on it together and see what we can-
Okay, if you need any help, let us know, and we can contact other contacts.
And we're fortunate that we already have that previous detailed study for the next, that we use the same group or some other group to build on, so it's, we're not starting from scratch on this one.
Okay, all right.
I think, we got, I think this is one where we got a really good shot at getting funded, too. As you know, grants are part of my life, and I'm on both sides of the table, both regions.
Seems to be a lot of grant money right now in Mass. So it's interesting.
Let's vote for it, if we can. All right, if we can accomplish our goals and save the taxpayers a few bucks, then I'm all for it, right?
All right, we-
We have any warrants?
We got some things to sign at the end of the meeting. Anyway, communications to anyone? No. Warrants? Meeting updates? I don't think so. No executive session?
At least, yeah, we're going to, okay, that's it.
The only thing we'd have is warrants from Tracy, we can sign them anytime.
Yep.
All right.
Motion we got to sign?
What?
Chapter 90 stuff.
Do you want to just adjourn the meeting, then, and?
Yep, motion to adjourn.
Motion to, second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done.